says and the assets continue to perform well, then yes, you should get to 100% funded. And then the last page is just about OPEC plans. So kind of by their nature, OPEC plans are not nearly as well funded as pension plans because they are much newer and also for the most case, there are not payments that are being actively made. Whereas with the pension, you have monthly distributions that go out to pay the retirees. OPEC plans are, you know, it's kind of as needed funded or funding for recipients. So your return assumption for the OPEC is 6.5%, very just right in line with the pension, slightly above the median return assumption across the state of Connecticut for OPECs, which is 6.25%. And your plan is 31.5% funded, which is slightly less funded than the average, but still, you know, you are a good company. And I don't recall exactly what the, I know that you have contributed to the OPEC in years past, but it's not necessarily a continuous contribution.
Do you really want to do that, Kevin?
I'd like to. I'd be sitting down and talking about that while we have more time.
This should be an ongoing plan with some kind of...
Oh, we do take advisement. We've been working, had been working with our finance director on that stuff. We would like to continue that process, but we have to have someone as a finance director to work with.
We've got a finance director, though, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I get that she's gone now, but this is 2024. These numbers that you're giving us are for 2023 and 2024. Will we not have a finance director, correct?
Hmm.
Yeah, but it's something that, I mean, it's not uncommon that funding the OPEC falls very low on the list. Again, there aren't, there's generally not an immediate need for distributions from that plan. And when you have, you know, roadwork that needs to be done or, you know, it's, it's...
But pensions are... In a perfect world, yeah, pensions and OPECs are very important things too for the people that'll work for this town.
Yep. Okay, so that was the governance calendar. So I'll spend just a couple minutes talking about the broad capital markets. So on page 14, you can see some broad economic data. You know, the market environment has actually been very strong so far this year. There has been quite a bit of volatility, but by and large, we're looking at very strong returns across the board. But we are starting to see some weakness in some economic data points. So for example, you can see some labor market statistics on the left-hand side of page 14, where the unemployment rate has ticked up and, you know, workers have tached downward. So we're starting to see a bit of stress within the labor market. The Fed did cut rates at their September meeting. The expectation is that we are likely to see another one to two rate cuts before the end of the year, probably another 25 basis points at each of their next two meetings. That should be, you know, kind of winded in the sails of the broad economy. But by and large, those expected rate cuts are really already baked into markets. So what, we don't really expect that to have a significantly positive impact. But if the Fed does decide not to cut rates at either of their next two meetings, that could have a negative impact on market results. One of the things that we've seen so far this year is significant outperformance of international equities, which is a shift in a trend that we had seen for the last 10, 15 years, where domestic markets had significantly outperformed. So on the bottom left of page 15, you can see the relative outperformance of international markets, both developed and emerging markets. So EFA stands for developed markets. That's the navy blue line, and then emerging markets is the lighter blue line. This is outperformance relative to the S and P 500. So developed markets are about 10 percentage points ahead of U.S. markets on a year-to-date basis, and emerging markets are about 13 or so percent ahead. So having diversification and exposure to international equities has been a real tailwind so far this year. And then one of the other dynamics that we've seen is it's really been large cap domestic equities that have driven markets in recent history. And we've started to see that shift just over the past couple of months or so because small cap companies are more heavily reliant on debt. So with the Fed beginning their rate cut campaign, that's going to be winning the sales of small companies because they have no debt. As the cost of servicing that debt comes down, that's better for small cap companies. So you can see the leverage levels within small cap are much higher within large cap. So again, that falling interest rate environment is likely to be more positive for small caps. So we could see kind of a rebound in small cap companies. Our exposure to, or the town's, the town portfolios exposure to small caps has been not detrimental, it hasn't been negative, but it has been kind of a headwind relative to large cap. So we are likely to see that shift. So on page 16, you can see these are the market results so far this year. So it's for the first nine months of the calendar year. And, you know, we're looking at positive results across the board. All of the fixed income segments of the market are shown in the navy blue bars. The equity exposure is shown in gray bars, and then kind of everything else, like real assets and commodities and hedge funds is shown oil blue. So what you can see is that, you know, every area of the investable universe for the most part has been positive. You can kind of ignore the circles. Those represent the third quarter results, but the bar represents the year-to-date results. And again, the biggest visual takeaway from this page is the significant outperformance of international markets, both developed markets and emerging. So a broadly diversified portfolio has performed very well so far this year. And if you think about, you know, long-term expectations of returns, the expectation is for bonds to return somewhere around 4% long-term and stocks to return about 7% so far, or 7% over the long run. And these results have been well in excess of that so far this year. And then if we can just flip ahead a few pages to page 20, this is a page that I always like to highlight, and it just shows the importance of diversification. So it can be easy for folks to look at what has happened very precisely and say, oh, well, why would we have any exposure to asset class A, B, C? You know, it hasn't performed well. Let's put all of our money in asset class, you know, G. Yep. What this shows you is for the last 10 calendar years, we have the best performing asset class at the top of each column, going all the way down to the worst performing asset class of that calendar year. And the big takeaway from this chart is that there's really no rhyme or reason. So it's very hard to discern by looking at what worked last year and what didn't work last year, what's going to work next year. But what is discernible is that the portfolio, the OPEC is just on a performance box. It's never at the top, but it's also... So it has that smooth return stream in the middle. So by having diversification across all asset classes, it helps reduce the volatility and, you know, produce stronger returns.
Do you have any advice for what we, of something we should move or something we should do as far as, I know 2025 is almost over, but I'm talking about 2026.
No, that's, no, that's something that we are, so the way that we work with the town is we have what's called a discretionary relationship, where we have been given authority to make portfolio changes and then report out. So we, we are always, if we think that there's a change that needs to be made, we're always doing that.
And then you report to the...
Yes, yes, yep.
When there's an issue that they see something trending downwards, they also notify us, saying, we're concerned about an area, so they lock them that forces away.
Right.
So there's constant monitoring of that situation?
Yes, and your portfolio is always very well diversified and has exposure to all appropriate asset classes. Okay, any questions about the broad capital markets? So I'll just take a couple minutes to talk about the portfolio performance. So if we look on page 23, here's a snapshot of the pension plan. So we do show the returns of the plan on the top left-hand side. You can see the bar chart. So on a calendar year-to-date basis, I mentioned that markets have been very strong. The portfolio was up 12.7% so far this calendar year. And again, thinking about those long-term return expectations of about 4% for bonds, about 7% for stocks, you would expect maybe, you know, 6.5% return or so. You've already earned 12.7% so far this year. And then if you look at the annualized results over the past three years, the annualized return of the plan has been 16.1% per year. Over the past five years, 9.5%, so on and so forth. So if we think back to that 6.5% return target, your plan has exceeded that return target across all time frames. So you are growing the plan's assets at a faster pace than what the actuaries would have expected. So that's very good for the town and means that contribution is lower. If we take a look at the top right-hand side, you can see the growth of assets. So for, we ended the third quarter with just over $38 million in the pension plan. And then I think it's interesting to go back to the sense and sector column and look at the growth of the plan. So the beginning market value back in 2014 was $17 million. Since that time, you've had net outflows of $701,000. I will tell you, compared to other pension plans, this is, these net flows are incredibly strong. Most plans, we see net outflows because the monthly pension payments for most municipalities are higher than what the plan is putting in. So this shows that the outflows and the town's contributions over the past 11 years have almost canceled each other out.
So they've canceled each other out?
Yep. And then you've had asset gains of about $21.7 million to bring you to that ending value of $38 million. So this is, this represents very strong growth. And then in terms of the asset allocation profile, you can see that in the bottom half of the page. So our overall target is 30% to fixed income, 39% to domestic equity, 23.5% to international equity, and then we have 7.5% to real assets. So again, very broad diversification. We run asset allocation studies on an annual basis, which there's a lot that goes into them, but we update our capital market expectations. And we will run the portfolio's allocation profile and say, okay, over the next full market cycle, it's our expectation that the plan will return on average X percent per year. And what we try to do is make sure that the plan is always appropriately positioned to help meet that 6.5% return objective. And then I'll just mention on page 24, this again shows the allocation profile. But the other thing that you can see on this page is on the far right-hand side of the table, you can see the minimum allocation and the maximum allocation to each asset class. That is captured within the investment policy statement, and this is something that we always monitor. So we make sure that the plan's allocation is within the guidelines that have been established within the investment policy. And then finally, on page 25, we talked a lot about your diversification. Here you can see all of the underlying holdings within the plan. At Fiducian, we don't invest in any individual stocks or bonds directly. We're not choosing, okay, we think you should invest in Netflix or Google. We are doing research on institutional money managers. You can see that everything in your portfolio is accessed through a mutual fund vehicle. And so we've got, again, very broad diversification even within all of the asset classes. So for instance, within fixed income, we've got five underlying managers. Two of them are kind of traditional fixed income managers that are similar to the marketplace aggregate index. And then the others are more diversifying exposures to help create an overall, you know, kind of a defensive fixed income portfolio. Within domestic equity, we have exposure across the market cap spectrum. So we've got large cap and mid-cap. Both of those exposures are passive. So broad market exposure at a very low cost, and then we use active management on the small cap side. And we have a pairing of one value manager and one growth manager that complements each other. And then within international equity, we have the underwriting funds, one passive fund, and the remainder are active. Dodge and Cox and WCM are both within the developed markets, and then ARGA and GQG are within the emerging markets.
What about Vanguard?
Vanguard is a broad market, so that's the, both developed and emerging markets. And then the real assets is the last piece. So we've got Coen and Steers, which is a REIT fund. And then GWS Real Assets Fund has exposure across the real assets universe, so that has exposure to commodities, natural resource equities, infrastructure, tips, and real estate. So again, very broad diversification. As Kevin mentioned, we do monitor all of the strategies. So you can see on page 27, we list all of the underlying strategies, and you can see the contained status for each and every one of them. Our manager research group assigns a status to all of the strategies on a quarterly basis. So the other strategy, the other types of statuses could be discussed, what we'll watch. That's if there's some sort of level of concern. Maybe there's an impending retirement. Maybe there's some unexplained underperformance, something like that. Or terminate, which is, you know, we need to move away. And because we have a discretionary relationship with the town, you would never see a report that has a terminate status because we would have already gotten rid of that one. So I can flip ahead to the OPEC, and that will be a quicker review. If we look on page 40, again, this is a much smaller asset pool, just shy of 1.8 million. And this is all passively managed. So we have no active managers in the portfolio. It's all index funds, which is very typical for a small kind of startup OPEC plan. So again, very strong performance. We look over the last, you know, three-year time period, and on an annualized basis, the plan has returned 16.8%. Over the long run, well in excess of that 6.5% return objective. And we did end the calendar, sorry, the quarter with 1.7 million. And then very similar allocation profile, 30% target to fixed income and 70% to the return seeking assets like domestic equities, international equities, and real assets.
Do we think we're going to do more international equity with coastal markets?
Nope. So the way that we position portfolios is not reactionary based on returns. It's based on our outlook. So the exposure that we have to international equity is really reflective of the global opportunity set. So if we think of all the investable equities across domestic equity and international equity, the breakdown is about 62% domestic, 38% international. Your portfolio is just slightly skewed towards international, so you have probably about a 60-40. So relative to the global opportunity set, you've got a very modest overweight to international equities, and we think that that's appropriate. We wouldn't want to pile into the international because with international markets, there's more risk.
More volatility, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So we want to have something that's pretty neutral to the global opportunity set. And then again, everything is passive in this portfolio. So on page 42, you can see all of the underlying holdings. Again, these are all mutual funds. So we've got the Vanguard Total Bond Market Fund, the Fidelity Total Market Index, Vanguard Total International Index, and then Vanguard Meet Index. So very similar in terms of allocation and positioning to the pension plan, but just no active management given size. So that's it. I'm certainly happy to go into more detail, but...
My only discussion is this is a 50-page report that I just got, and I'm pretty good at this stuff. So if I should have gotten it before, I could have had more in-depth conversations than flipping two pages.
Okay.
So in the future, if you're invited to do a presentation to them, you can get this to them ahead of time, like I said, so that I can read through it and have some, you know, have some questions. It's a little hard to do flipping two pages.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I know you follow questions. Just your emails are what.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. With that, I obtain at this time a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And adjourn, we go right into our Board of Selective Meeting. Call the Board of Selective Meeting to order for October 14th at 7:18, and ask that you please rise to the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No call.
All right, gang.
Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Cory.
I am seen to approve the meeting minutes from the Special Board Selective Meeting. From the 9:22 and also our regular meeting from 9:15.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 9:15 to 25, and then 9:22 to 21.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Every no-no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ivan D. is public comment. Anybody here wish to speak in public?
Of course. Virginia Allen, there's a question for you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen. In noticing the posting for the Director of Finance, I see that we posted her position...
Excuse me, just if you wouldn't mind, we are here to discuss the items on the agenda. Anything else out of that, you're not going to talk about?
No.
Just what's on the agenda.
I see it aren't.
Anybody else wish to speak? Here, now we go into old business, I have E1. E1 is for review of the two proposal ordinances. You will see... So there has been discussion between the attorney and review of the initial 143. The 143 had a discussion from the attorney talking about the deletion and the definition of solicitor as fine as modifications to. The next thing he said was in addition to section four, it's not appropriate for the local ordinances, and besides, it's unnecessary, as these are state and federal requirements already. It can be added in the application form. The third thing he mentioned was in addition to the waiver of fees, it's already accommodated and unnecessary. The explanatory text can be added to the application form. The last one was as to section seven, the ordinance as proposed does not regulate political or religious activities of speech or the distribution of reading materials for free. The ordinance as written is content neutral. Proposed paragraph, while audible as a policy, adds an implication that political speech is actually being regulated. As to say, a licensed insurer will determine what is political speech when he or she determines whether or not it's exempt or not. This would be unconstitutional. We recommend that the proposed edition be deleted. So that's why the changes were made. So what you saw was from Mario, the most recent one, was with those changes. With the advice of the attorney, so that's what we're looking to talk about or put over. And I reviewed all those changes with Mario's presentation to verify that it's exactly what that was. He even said that, you know, basically it reverts back to what we had before the Board of Selective or other, you know, other limiting parts and solicitations was defined. So what you received was his final version. My opinion about this at this point is we have something from Mario, we have something from the attorney. It's probably best to move this forward to add with the others for a town meeting for discussion at that point.
So let me ask you then, the definition of solicitor, there was nothing taken out of it? Without them done in...
Yeah, underneath this solicitor. Originally, he had it in there with the...
Basically, is in there exactly as I, I wrote it up before. Taking out the telephones, exactly.
Yeah, so either or by telephone were taken out, so it's no longer there.
So the campus, so remember the one in KPR?
Yep.
The second, the paper that I proposed, that's exactly it.
And then four?
That was, under four, it was, actually, the attorney suggested that not appropriate, so we'll take a look under section four.
Application.
Yep, that's where, that is where the chief can actually make the modification, so we can add to the application form.
So this won't be in there?
Yep, it'll be...
What will be there?
The one that I gave you there is, if you want...
The most recent one?
Yeah, the most recent one.
This is the recent one, it's like...
It says same one?
Yeah, I remember before it had that other thing that I underneath there, if I could show you. Mario had originally put in under four.
One, two, three, four.
He had that, no application. The attorney said take that out.
So I have a question.
I'm just not seeing that.
Go ahead. Finish. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question. So if you want to go door knocking for your campaign, you have to have a solicitor permit with a D?
No.
Well, it says... Where does that go? The fee for an individual license shall be $50 for each of your working, parking, pedaling, soliciting, or vending, is not, well, $50.
Remember in the political activities, that's what Mario would put in?
Yep.
The attorney said take that out.
Okay, so political, so we go door knocking, that doesn't apply to this?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's, that was wrong. And it still has one?
I think that was the version I was looking for.
Oh, the woman?
Yeah, so I wrote...
Yeah, you have the older one, yeah.
So the waiver of fees is no longer?
Yes, it's in there.
Section five. Well, there is a waiver of fees. That's still there. The attorney said that was fine.
And then on section seven?
What about seven?
I don't know what happened on seven.
Well, that seven was the one that, like we just talked about, where he originally had political activities.
Okay, okay.
Yes. And people, kids are still at the center, so that's still...
Yeah. Each week we talk, each month, each month we talk about it.
Yeah, we have like six copies.
This was the first one.
Well, we moved it. Sorry, different...
I know, this is what I'm trying to...
Yeah, there's like six copies.
Make sure I'm on it.
The one from Mario, the last one from Mario has all the blue.
Yeah, I did get that. It's what... Yeah, I did get that, it's why this. It's why I was earlier. I'm sorry.
Any other questions on it? So the burden you have now in front of you, would you like to forward that to the rest of the others, we have two of them, right?
We have the one, the one.
Forty-four, forty-five.
Yeah. Then we have 126.
So coming to that in a minute. What's your pleasure on 143?
Make a motion, move ordinance 123, ahead to a town meeting of a hearing.
I'll second that, with the change.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. On to 126, we've got the only change that we talked about last time, the only change was the one thing which was at the bottom of, not a tax credit, changing from 100 to Every other form of that still applies. Question? What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, move ordinance 126, actually I think 146.
It's a modification of 126, that's the only thing changed.
Let's just, let's change the number though. Any man, we'll change the number. So make a motion to move 126, as it is right now, to a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Every known, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to new business, before we jump into new business, we did receive something today, we just did the, actually just took all of the bids today, that's why, I wasn't sure if we would get any bids at all. So we did take the bids today, so an ask to add item onto the agenda, item number two. Motion to add item two to the Board of Select agenda, discuss and approve the RFP bid for the city's series benches and tables at Lions Park.
Make a motion to add item two.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Every known, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So item two is to discuss and approve a bid for RFP for the series benches and tables at Lions Park. This was part of a RFP that was put up to.
Okay, the back one?
The back one, sorry, you're right. All right, item one, let's go back. Item one, consider not counting tax refunds requested for tax collection totaling $1,081.81. Nissan Motor Acceptance Corp., 24056. Ally Financials, 22197. Deborah J. Shavit, 3899. Nicholas C. Puris, 2448. Teresa Smith, 22238. Toyota Leasen Trust, 33343.
Make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $1,081.81.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, item number two, no. So the town plan field through the C grants, so they want these available, so they want to utilize that to apply for, putting out a bid for RFP for benches and tables. Very specific about this, so that's why you have something from the, from the Chan talking about the economic development of this. They wanted very specific items on there, so that's why when the bids came in, she had to review them all. Although that was not the lowest bid, the reason why she did not request the lowest bid was because there is, the spec requirements are for ADA use, so they couldn't do it because the size of the bench was incorrect. And that's why you're looking at WB Mason with a bid of $21,265.22 because they're the ones that have the actual requirements on their specs for that amount. You see, the page we put forward was with all the bids, but again, she had to review every single one for what the right, correct specs were. So moving forward, the Board of Select would need just to, motion to accept the WB Mason bid for $21,265.22.
Make a motion, that we accept the bid from WB Mason, in the amount $21,265.22 for Lions Park upgrades.
I'll second it.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do not have an other, entertain a motion to adjourn.
What happened to the other that you sent out?
Oh, I'm sorry, the other one, after we, I sent an email to you. They backed up, they said wait until another.
So she wants it on the actual agenda and not added? Which is better because I didn't usually do that.
Okay.
Yep.
entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
If we want to make. Our number doesn't make.
Our numbers are going to be up.
Thank you, they signed it up.